Thank you. A couple of issues. First one, you've asked for prices on a new x-ray machine and metal detector, and we have got those for you. An x-ray machine, size that we have now is about $24,000. For larger models, 28, but to be honest with you, the size we've got is sufficient. And a metal detector is $3,500. So, pretty expensive, especially for that x-ray machine. Also, I had a couple of other things I needed to talk to y'all about. One of them was Betsy had to go to a mandatory training session that was required by the insurance company.
Who is she?
Betsy Gennons, our chief of the jail.
Okay.
And it was mandatory meeting she had to go to, and we're certainly asking for some money to be put in for that to be paid for, since it was mandatory. And then Shane has got one class he went to, was a level three class for euthanization. There are two other classes we're requesting some money to be put in the budget for that. Again, those classes are not cheap. They're $525 per, and there's two of them.
Is he already been?
No, ma'am, not for these two.
Has Betsy already been?
She has been to that training, yes. It was last week.
We tried to get the, well, it's gone without plan. Did we try to get that in before they go to approve?
Right.
But this is our license. Go ahead.
And then the final issue, Matt Chairman, is there's an outstanding bill for $404, and I'm gonna let Shane tell you what that's about. It's about some animal care, but there's some issue as to who's gonna pay it, whether it be the city or us, or somebody, dogs that we brought in, so Shane.
Before she had access, ever, you know how much on Betsy you needed in the budget?
I do not know.
Okay.
I'll have to get the camera on that.
She probably drove her, she probably drove her old car.
She did. She did.
We can get her pay.
$500.
You don't know what the class cost?
It was part of their training, but, that's more than training that she goes down to ACCA, just came in and did the extra.
And we got like a week's notice on back to the chair.
Oh, we just gotta pay mileage, yeah, mileage and what it is.
Well, they drove the city cars. They had a car, county car. This bill's right.
I guess, I'm assuming.
Not, $500.
How many days would be that?
Uh, I believe it was a week. At least three days.
Okay. That all? Oh, Shane, go ahead, Shane.
Only vet bill for Doc Williams. Two of them was dogs that I actually seized. One dog had a, had been in the trailer for like three weeks. The state law, when I seize one, it has to see a vet before you can do anything else with it. The three puppies, we done an eviction on a guy. He made a comment, something's gonna happen to his animals. We got him sheltered. Puppies had heart, but, so, you know, didn't really have a choice on them. And the other one was a stray dog I picked up. It had a chain embedded in its neck. So, I had carried it, haven't, you know, I had coated it, I, but it was actually done growing up around it. But what I'm running into, I, I don't know how the commission done this far as paying the vet bill. They sent it to, give it to me. I gave it to the shelter. Didn't, you know, I don't, like I say, I don't know how that work. Give it to shelter. They said they brought it up here. It was sent back to city hall, and then Doc Williams called me on his money. And so, I told him that I would get y'all the bill. I didn't know. And I would try to find out how it's supposed to work. Cause I don't, like I say, I don't know what the agreement was.
We don't understand, we don't understand, we don't know that.
I was thinking that the understanding was that we split the expenses with the city. And so, I, my thought is that all those bills should go to the city, and then they bill us for half, with all of the other expenditures.
Well, it's kind of the way I looked at it, but say, you know.
Well, we can, um.
But here's a copy of the statement.
We'll take care of that.
How much is it?
Four hundred and four dollars.
Yeah, I'll look. Let's just pay it and let it go.
We're gonna pay it.
Here's, here's a statement. I, I just told them that I would call them, let them know if I pay.
Just pay it out of whatever money they're paying you.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Your time, sir. Just shut that door on the end of that.
Madam Chairman, and poor man who's from down here are asking for some money.
Okay, we got what?
What it is, an ambulance building, we're trying to build one at North San Mountain. The bank, First Southern Banks donated land to us. And the CEO of the hospital has told us that he would put a full-fledged ambulance up there and, and do the fan of the ambulance. They'll take care of all that. But we've gotta get a building built, and we need some money to help us on that building. What it amounts to, now, we have to wait for ambulance to come all the way from Piscatawattan. And that's a long way, even though that guy that works down there said he could drive it in 18 minutes.
I don't drive it.
Herd horse in good shape.
I don't know what he's using. I don't know what kind of vehicle he's driving. But anyhow, the other one had to come from Stevens up here. And we need an ambulance up there to support the people that's up there.
Let me ask you this. What's, get the building complete and everything where the ambulance move in, what's the total, uh, of the ambulance?
Of the building, the whole building, where they can move in?
I can't tell you that now. Just somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty, about thirty thousand or four thousand.
Uh, how much do you, how much do you looking for?
We'd like to have eight or ten thousand if we can get it, because the Senator's done promised us, uh, a deal. Just done told me he'd give us some money, so.
The hospital, they won't, they just don't staff it, they won't give you none.
No, they won't give us any. But we do need that up there to support the people up there.
Well, they need your stuff there.
How about we give, how about we give you ten thousand? That'll be good.
I appreciate you. I'm not your kiss.
Put it on. I'll take one. Kiss me, kiss her for me, Jack.
Mr. Moore, I'd like to, I'd like to, uh.
I'd love to see that.
Me too, me too. Zack, and you've been in here much longer than I.
Well, Mr. Moore, no, we went out there one night to a meeting, and we got us all throwed out, didn't we?
But you know, since we've been here, we haven't asked for much.
I've never asked.
That's what he told me outside. I swore he'd asked me, placed a hundred times in the years.
I asked you for one thing, and you didn't.
You think, Mr. Dm, with the $10,000, if our legislation can give you, build a building?
I hope we can.
You can get it started anyway.
What it amounts to, I've got a lot of free labor that's gonna help us with. And I'm trying to get some of our concrete blocks and stuff donated by Scotchy Company.
Senator asked me, who will make the check to Bryant Community Center?
Just hold and let me call you back and let you know who to make it to.
We need to word the motion, though. Do you have any idea who would be donating it to? Or just donate, can we just do a donation for the construction of a?
Cause we hadn't said, we hadn't said that up yet, really.
It would probably be fire department, um.
Well, I guess Highland Medical Center, cause that's the one that's gonna be on it.
They get a Highland Medical Center.
They get hold that check, you may never see it.
Okay.
They'll need a name on it.
I tell you what we do, Mr. Porter, you can help us out here. Can we, can we set up a line item account for that?
For a grant?
And let Senator put it in there, then write the check out to, make the motion to set aside $10,000 in account for the ambulance station in Bryant, Bryant Community.
For public purpose.
For public purpose, and she can put it in a line item, then it'll pass you. When you find out the name she can write the check to, she, she can issue the check then.
The way we worked at the First Southern Banks Governance Program.
They gonna change title to the Land?
Right. And the, and the land will be made out to Highland Medical Center. And then, if the thing goes under, then, First Southern will get all of it back. It'll be back to them. But we're hoping that that never happens. So, we can do that. We just need to make the motion.
Motion to appropriate that.
It needs to be to an organization at North San Mountain, rather than Highland, cause if it properly were to go back.
But we make the motion, set over in that line count, and she can write it out to the program.
But Mr. Moore, I want to say that you're a very hard worker for that community up there.
Well, they ain't too big, cause I watch what they eat.
But I can, you know what's going on up there.
Yeah, Jack, me too, when he stuck with us, and just the things that, we lost everything
that we've had at Bryant. We don't have a place to buy a quart of milk, a loaf of bread, or a gallon of gas.
Store clothes?
That's all. It's every bit of it's left.
I tell you, anytime, anytime, I need you to, I call Mr. Dm, he's right there.
That's right. You'll never be forgotten to us.
I found that a long time ago. That's about all I'm saying for.
It is, it's good.
Don't forget to introduce your friend here.
Yeah, this is Bill Stephen, he's from North San Mountain.
Bill Walker, too. Bill's happy now.
Well, we have been that far.
I appreciate y'all. We'll be there and let you.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all coming. And have luck with that ambulance thing. It took us eight years. Look like we might have it on the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate you. Yeah.
Y'all take care.
You too, man. Take care.
Appreciate it.
Glad y'all finally got there.
If there's anything going on up there, he'll let you know, won't he? Okay, Carl.
I've come to ask for a million.
Oh.
Goodbye, have a good day. I'm gonna hand y'all a packet. Now, this first part is, is just something, y'all FYI, okay? First page, just FYI. Now, I've got two temporary employees I've let go as of October the 19th, and their names are on the second page.
Those were temporary, is that right?
Yeah, I let them go as of October the 19th. And then I've had a full-time person which, to resign, his last day will be October 31st. His position opened up a full-time position at the park for park maintenance. And I was wanting to fill that position with a full-time position to go ahead and start advertising for it, and see if we can get it filled.
Well, Carl, we're gonna leave, this is our last minute, and we want to, loud, get everything over today. And I would suggest to leave that for the next, yeah. And that would give, you know, we're not gonna need anymore by long.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I just, you know. But that position is gonna create a full-time position.
Right, okay.
I will say this on Carl, the gentleman that's retired, he had a, of course Carl didn't, but I know Jay, he's worked, I guess, down there since I've been on the commission at the park. He's probably one of the best mowing persons you'll ever have, cause he mows it and keeps it clean, and, I mean, he keeps it off the roadway and stuff. You don't have to spend all day cleaning it every day.
Clean the road.
He had back surgery, and I can relate to that. I've been down there. And Jay just hasn't done that good with it. We losing a good worker there, and a good person, too.
Is he sick, or just?
When he had that back surgery, he's not doing good, like Jack's.
He's not improving well.
And we're not, I mean, he was there every day. He was dependable.
He worked.
You know, he was asking what to, so we're really gonna be missing him, exactly.
If that'll work with you, that will.
That'll be fine.
Matt Chairman, I'd suggest you go ahead and put on the agenda to accept the reservation.
Yes, yes.
Just not do the other.
And also, I have one more thing to say, okay? North San Mountain Walking Trail, I know that Mr. Jack Smith here has put a lot of work into that walking trail.
Yes, I agree, yes.
Getting it fixed to where it needs to be and all that stuff. And I would like to name that walking trail after Jack Smith.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Now, the only, my only drawback I've got.
I'm gonna get a stand moving up there.
My only, my only drawback I got on that is he gotta walk one time around for it.
He gotta tote the sign around it one time.
Yeah, I agree if he walked around it one time.
He'd make it, he'd make it one.
I think it'd be a good thing, cause Jack's put a lot of time in it.
I say one thing, we built that smoking track, we got a grand eighty twenty. Mr. Dm says it will be not be a penny, county money spent on it. I got all the dirt donated, all the rock, it didn't cost the county a penny. We had the tornado, I was in, I was in trouble. But I got wheeling bill, got donations, and it, we had tornado, it didn't cost the county a penny money to pick the parking lot up.
But what happened, we took in the park, and, as, the park, I mean, that's really hip, and keeping it nice and pretty and stuff.
Carl has done a wonderful job of that. And before, I got, and I had parks, I couldn't get nobody to mow. Grace got some high red, the orchard track, people, uh, pretty, uh, you mix snake with it. So, now, we got a shelter away. We have lots of vandalizing and stuff up that window, still a deal between the back end. They break a window down, and we got that, we got the trailer now. And we got to get that, nobody's putting in till, but we're going to put them in now, so if you got somebody.
Yeah, we're going to put them in now.
Yeah, so we gotta get bathrooms for what's walking track. And it's a bus, so, somebody's over in, what do you mean, it's got a top side and a down end, so that's gonna be better.
Well, that tree's why I had to put a porch behind it, cause it was getting sideways from me.
All right, I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem.
I don't get lying and jacking for rent.
I serve good rich, Jake, y'all.
Hey, Suzie, he's getting up in the morning.
I said, why don't we put lying and jacking for rent, so he's up.
Walking trail, name back.
I see that. That's a good idea, Jack, don't you?
You're gonna watch it.
I'm gonna watch it, too.
Is there anything yet?
I have a picture.
I told you, Jack.
They had me clean for that walking track, and I know a good man by the book, but take over and I leave a hose. Ain't calling no names, though.
Thank you, Ms. Lady. First thing we have, is, this is the first of our A-trip projects that we're doing. We've got everything. We've got the agreement with Aldott. We need to get it approved and signed. This is, uh, County Road 17, all the way from one end to the other, basically up the mountain. We went in with county forces and got the mountain where it meets federal requirements now, so it is eligible for federal money all the way through. Cherry, what's the amount on that?
About 1.5.
Oh, it was 1.5 million dollars that we received with A-trip. We'd received 8% of that, and they've already approved this expenditure, expenditure of the match. So, we just need a resolution, agreeing with the agreement without us since. Need to put on the agenda and give it a resolution on it. Our second thing with A-trip, we've got that in, uh, that, October 15th, wasn't that right, Cherry? And they're reviewing those now, so we've got some more in it. Maybe ones we didn't get approved in the first round, we'll get this time. We're already at about five and a half million, thanks to y'all's support and helping us out with that. And hopefully, we'll get, we'll get a lot more from it. Labor positions, I give y'all, I think y'all got a candidate A, candidate B for two positions. I'd like to have that put on the agenda and approved, if it's, if it's okay with y'all. So, Haris, while ago, we've, County Road 232, we went in, I just, I guess I'm bringing this up to kind of brag on the bridge crew a little bit. We sent six guys up there Monday morning on a dead-end road with a bridge. It was about to collapse. And Johnson family, they was back in Cross, there's actually two or three residences over there right now. They've just been real good about working with us. They parked their trucks out of them and had to walk back and forth, just to, well, we've had the bridge closed and replaced it. Our crew of six opened, closed the bridge Monday morning about 11 o'clock, pulled the deck off, and Friday about 12 o'clock, put traffic back on it. So, those guys have done a great job, and I'd just like to, you know, recognize them for what they did. They really worked hard and done a good job on that. This other thing has come up, got through the solid waste, and it's come up, and I've got to do something with it, and I wanted to bring it up. It come up today. I was hoping Mr. Porter could help me a little bit on it. I'm gonna pass out these maps, if y'all want mine, just pass one around. I've got some areas highlighted. This is right in the area where Marshall County corners into Jackson County, up on Grant Mountain. Our solid waste trucks have been, well, actually Allied, Advanced Disposal, who does Marshall Counties, they have been doing the, the roads that I have highlighted up on the north section. They've been going in there and doing those to keep us from having to travel about fifteen miles up the mountain and everything to get over our tow. But they've, if y'all see the red dot on there, we've had a new resident that's moved in here, and this is a Sunday that's been opened up. This resident here has moved in and requested garbage service. Advanced Disposal has chosen not to supply here with garbage service, because of the fact that they're in Jackson County. They've been doing about twenty or, twenty or so residents up here where I've got the, the yellow highlighted, been doing it for years, I understand it. It's gonna be hard for us to go all the way in up there and get that one residence, which we have to supply garbage service to. So, Advanced has not agreed to go ahead and take that, continue to do all of them. We're gonna go ahead and take over all of the accounts. And I thank Mr. Porter for correcting the wrong. We have the right to do that, since it's inside Jackson County.
As a matter of fact, I'd be surprised if Advanced has a franchise to do business with Jack.
I didn't, I wasn't worried, is, doing this, it's been going on for several years, and just because so far, you know, you have to go way down into Marshall County to get into those few roads into Jackson County. So, but I just wanted to bring that up, and make sure we was operating within our rights to contact Advanced and try to get that situation resolved.
So, how many people are you talking about in total, do you know?
I think it's about twenty to thirty, something like, maybe about twenty-five. And this, this lady that's requesting the service, normally Haris is familiar with, that road, we rode up there on the bluff, and I talked to you back house, but they didn't move there on the far end, and they denied to give it service, so.
I would suggest it, if we work out a deal with them, if they do keep everybody, then we ought to get one franchise to do business, cause as far as I know, they don't have one now.
I'd never, you know, just one thing, that you don't, until something comes up, you don't rely on this happening. So, we'll work on that, and Mr. Porter, I'll get the union, and we'll, we'll say that's for.
If there's any question, or we can discuss here, that, we can.
Item number D?
Yes.
What is, what is that?
That is, item E is that back several months ago, we had a vacant position, and we, the first airboarding, I graded those sheets, they were given to Philip. I don't know what Philip did with them, but I wanted to get everything settled on that before we left, and that position is still open. And I feel like that it needs to be.
Yeah, there was a problem on the ground, so we just decided at that time to let it, to not do it. And we are looking at, you know, with our new trucks, we've got, and thanks to y'all, we've got a lot of our new trucks coming in, and, you know, we're gonna have, we might have to look to reduce some in the future.
Are you talking about the men up there?
Talking about the men, yes, ma'am.
So, what you're, what you're trying to get at, then, is that you might move one of the men, I gathered, I heard, that, that.
We, we could possibly do that.
Have you got anybody capable that's doing that, that would do that?
Ms. Lady, I, I'm running out of power to answer that question. I, I don't know. I haven't really checked them.
I'd like, I'd like, so this is going to be a genus.
I've got, I've got a few things. I can get some utility service. They're running out of money. They got food, they can't. And they say they gained one. There's two churches that bind together, and they, they go out and have food for Thanksgiving and Eve and Christmas. They have asked that the county can help out. And he didn't come out of money. He waited to keep, they're getting, they're getting great, they need food for Christmas.
They are a 401(c)(3).
And you don't, and you don't get, you don't get the donations up there like you used to, we had a storm. And so, lots of donations, they, they got done strong, in good, about gone. And they wanted service to make any plates, if they could get enough money to buy them goods to the service.
I bet you're talking about that.
Well, any amount we give, $1,000, $20,000, $2,500, that's what y'all give. Can we afford it? Well, I like to give $2,500, so that's, that's good.
What's the name?
If, Mr. Porter, that was the one, give me why, that was the, the license for the new one.
The one that's up the building.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sure. They done real good. They had lots of donations during the storm. But they still a bunch of needy people, they need some, they pick a lot of water.
So, you just like, those young guys, I guess, which was good.
Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations to the, congratulations.
Item O?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the one you feel it should be?
Well, if it's re-typed the way I presented it, which I haven't read it, but I assume it is, and that is correct.
It was on there, and I didn't know.
What was it, hon?
Undergo, discussion, not your perception.
About the grounds.
Yeah, ground.
Oh. Y'all want to discuss the grounds?
We've gone around and around on the grounds. We've got the master gardeners, they came in and they did us a great, big proposal, and.
They did, and I got it right here.
And we couldn't come to agreement on how to get that done. Galen probably just, uh, don't appreciate me saying, and then Galen came back and got some things started. If you go back and look at the master gardener thing, a lot of what he was trying to do corresponded with what the master gardener said should be.
And that's right here.
And so, I understand it's a difficult thing to change anything around here. Now.
Yes, sir.
Galen stopped his work because the veterans group complained, because they heard some rumors about what might or might not happen to the cannon, and it all turned out to be rumors.
This place is bad for rentals.
I spoke, I spoke with Mr. Livingston on that.
And that's a little bit on the, on the, you know.
I mean, that, I'd like to put it on the agenda and vote on it, and pour the concrete based on some tree experts. I don't, I don't, we started something. I'd hate for us to leave it for somebody else to.
Can we go ahead and cut that cedar tree and?
No.
You and I, you and I are all for that. You and I are all for that.
I know it, I know, but we.
But they suggested we cut it.
But I, that's not part of what I'm trying to put on the agenda. I just want us to get the state.
Well, you want to finish what was dug out, concrete, lead, rest.
I want, based on the recommendation from a tree expert.
Cause they go.
Yes. I want us to.
You're not going out there with a cannon tree?
I'm gonna put a concrete on it.
You just on, you just wanting the concrete washed dug out right there on the.
It's dug out all the way down, hon.
Oh, it, yeah, it is. And what, Mr. Mr. Livingston said he would appreciate it if we.
Raised it.
Concrete it under the cannon and raised it off the ground, so that the tires would never go flat.
I'm kinda like, let the next one.
What'd you say again?
You can put it on there.
Okay.
I don't see what happened.
I wanted to, I wanted to say, when I, in this letter that we received from the veterans and Mr. Livingston, and I resented, I myself resented what they stated in there about the, not respecting the armed forces. My son was in desert storm. I did, my cousin fought in American Revolutionary War. Cousin in Regina or Coffee fought in the Mexican war. So, my family, Mr. Simmons is a vet from the Marines, and Jack is. So, we do care, we do care about that. There's rumors got started about the cannon. The cannon is rusted. Go out there and look. We just, somebody suggested put it on concrete.
Raining it up out of mud.
That's right.
Yeah, that is, that'd be pain.
But no one said anything about moving and going away. Mr. Gary Morgan over here asked me, the last thing he asked me that day was, Ms. Sadie, would you call and, and see before you move it? And that was so we could butt under it. And we went out there and looked at that, that afternoon, and all it was, was that little.
Hound.
Yeah, and that's all it was. So, but we, uh, go.
I had one of them.
Come have a sark.
So, Galen and I happened to be down at Purple Jitters off a month or so ago, and it's.
We were waiting, and I thought you had banned them. Well, I had been banned, but the door's open, so they can't kick me out. So, so, while we were waiting to see, the first room I went to see, I happened to notice this thing framed on the wall, and I noticed it'd been signed by Ethan Lincoln. So, I asked about it.
So while we were waiting to see the first room to see, I happened to notice this thing framed on the wall, and I noticed it's been signed by Abraham Lincoln, so I asked about it. And supposedly it's a bond that was issued at some point today. They found it, the mayor's putting their stuff on the map. And, and so, uh.
Not completely.
So we have had a, uh, issue come up about that document and that maybe the commission should be responsible for that document, cause it might have significant value. So, uh, I took it upon myself to go ask the Pro Judge's office, and I had a very cordial conversation with the Pro Judge out in the parking lot, he was very kind and generous to me. And he said, uh, yes, that that was, that document was in a lockbox, and I explained that it had been explained to me. And, uh, so we had this conversation with Mr. Porter, that, Mr. Porter had said that that was property of the county and didn't necessarily need to be in lockbox under control of the Pro Judge. So I asked him if he would be willing to return that to the incoming commission, since we won't be around, and he said, yes, it wouldn't be a problem whatsoever. That was my cordial conversation with the Pro Judge. So I just wanted on the record that this commission has, because of, because of, uh, Galen and I happened to be down there bored with nothing to do while we waited on something, realized that supposedly the county is possession of a document signed by Abraham Lincoln.
If you watch Pawn Stars.
That was a copy.
That's a copy.
That was a copy. Supposedly the original is in a lockbox, so, so I would like to just have it on record, so that we know that the, the judge has agreed that he will return that to the commission.
They can put it on Pawn Stars and get it approved.